Equipment that's in the basement of the terminal building that we didn't, we were aware that was there, but we weren't aware of how much electricity it was pulling or what it was doing. First of all, we thought it was just a nominal, a nominal little charger plugged in, but we found out it was quite a bit more than that. So they, they came back to us and questioned, how much should this, should this bill be? They've had several electricians looked at it. I've looked at it myself. I thought I could read a name tag on the equipment and find out what it pulls, but there's about three different pieces and it's, it's pretty good sized equipment. So they had an electrician look at it and it's, it's pulling approximately one KW per hour. So basically, we took the electric bill. We had another meeting on, um, March 23rd, took the electric bill and took the, took the total amount that we had, um, assessed to them, which the total amount that's been assessed to them the whole time we've been there is forty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars. So, so they have, that's what their electric bill has been up until then. We decided that, uh, three thousand, if you do the math on it, one kilowatt per hour for the time that they've been there, that leaves the remaining balance of their electric bill that was left unpaid was nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and four cents. So, and then there's some question about some lights in the north room and, and whatever. So it's not a clean deal, but we decided that that was the amount we were going to ask for and they were in agreement of it. So at our meeting, at our, at our Monday night's meeting on the thirteenth, um, we passed a motion that they would pay the, that the unpaid balance was nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars, that they would keep current on their, um, on the current bill. And then they gave us a payment plan that they would pay the balance of that by the end of the year. So basically, they're going to pay the current, the current amount and then approximately one-eighth of the nine thousand dollars each, each month until it's paid off and that'll make, that'll have it paid off by the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, uh, that's the first question that you asked. How, that is what we're doing on the overdue utility bill. So is there any other question concerning that? And if not, I'll go to number two.
Dan, how we know what that's going to be the correct bill going forward then? Is there going to be rerouted, the electricity? Or can we put up a, a new meter there?
Okay. Well, no, right at the moment, we take the electric bill and we take the one KW per hour that that equipment is using and deduct it off of it.
Is there a reason it remains on, Dan?
What's that?
Is there a reason it remains on if in fact, I mean, is it, I don't know, is it doing something? Is there a purpose to that piece of equipment that is?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
We used to have, the whole north, north part of the terminal building used to be leased to the, uh, weather bureau.
Okay.
Service, okay.
Yep.
And they had employees and people and all kinds of.
Right.
Now they've automated all that. So everything is automated and it goes out on, on radio and telephone line and whatever.
Okay.
So we still have all the weather equipment that we always had.
Okay.
It's just that it's automated and it, it comes in and it's processed and it, and it goes out on the phone line.
Okay.
And, and, uh, we discussed moving that to a different location. Um, that doesn't work either. They gotta have twenty-four hour, the weather bureau has to have twenty-four hour access to that. So they gotta have a key to the room and all that kind of thing. So right now, they have a key to the basement part, which is separate from the restaurant. And so they can get down there and service their equipment on a twenty-four hour basis.
Okay.
Can they not have their own meter?
What's that?
Can they not have their own meter?
Well, that's a complicated issue. We would like to have everybody on their own meter out there. The airport authority, um, owns its own primary distribution system. And I don't know whether you, you know how it works in the city of Norfolk, but, um, the city of Norfolk owns a distribution system. NPPD leases it from them. All right, there's a section of the primary distribution system at the Norfolk Airport Authority that is not leased NPPD. Okay, so we, we own that primary ourselves. In order to get these meters separate, we have to turn that, we have, we have to go ahead and lease that primary to NPPD. They don't want it. It's thirty to forty years old. So the only way they'll take it is if we rebuild the whole thing for them and, and give it to them and that costs lots of money. Um, I was, I was at a meeting with Dennis about a month ago there and, um, we're trying to come up with a plan on what to do about that or, or figure out what's best for the airport in how to do that. So yeah, the cleanest deal, what we would love to do is just have everybody on their own meter and we don't worry about it.
So.
So NPPD doesn't want to do it and it costs a lot of money. What's a lot of money?
Yeah.
Uh, probably, I'm just guessing, but somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money.
Yes, that's plenty of money. Now, we have, we have to bury a section of that primary line. We have to put it underground anyway. So there's, I think there's forty thousand dollars in this hangar project that goes for NPPD to, to bury that section. And they will own that. They will own that part then. So I've got it in the works. I, I've, I've asked NPPD to give me a price on, on, uh, what it takes to bury the whole thing or ta, take over the, the whole works and they're going to get back to me on that. But I, uh, but, but it's, but it's something that the airport authority, well, we need to look at. Um, is this something that we need to get done in the next ten years or, or, or what should we do? I mean, it's just a management policy on, on what we should do. It's kinda, you know, um, I've been on the authority for thirty years and you just don't pay attention to all that kind of stuff until you try to make changes in it and then all of a sudden, oh, we have to do this. That's the way to.
Dan, a point of clarification, so the lines out there and you said, "we" own it, but the city, the city of Norfolk owns the real property out there, do they not, Dennis?
Yes.
I mean, we own the buildings, don't we own the electrical line too then?
Yes, we own all the electrical distribution system.
Okay, so the "we" is actually the city of Norfolk.
"We" is the city of Norfolk, managed by the Norfolk Airport Authority. However, if you, the city of Norfolk would like to replace the lines and get it from NPPD, we wouldn't complain in.
Well, no, I, what I was looking for was a point of clarification because it's, it was, you know.
Yeah.
It came off as "we," the airport authority owned it, but you don't really own the real property.
No, we do not own it. The, the airport authority simply manages this for the, for the city of Norfolk, so.
I, I would describe the electrical distribution system as the city of Norfolk owns it all. A portion of it we lease to NPPD. NPPD has total control over that area. They decide when things need to be updated, they have to repair it and maintain it and all of those things. Likewise, the city of Norfolk owns the airport authority properties, or the airport properties. By statute, the airport authority has the obligations and the responsibilities to maintain, operate and take care of all of that property that the city of Norfolk owns. So I think it's just a matter of who, who's on the hook for maintaining it and taking, overseeing it while the city owns it all. We've leased part of it to NPPD, part of it has gone to the airport authority.
Okay, 'cause that, that's what I was getting at. Who was, I mean, if, if we were leasing the entire portion of the distribution system to NPPD, I'm going, okay, how could they back away from that? Since they should be owning it, but we only leased a portion of it to them.
Well, probably what happened is we leased it all to NPPD and at some point in time, the airport authority to be on a group meter, asked to own a portion of it. And NPPD sold that to them. And that is common with a lot of our industrial complexes. If you would look at Volcraft as an example, that electrical distribution system at one point in time was all owned by the city. They came along and there was some rate adjustment, or rate benefits for them to have a single meter and own that distribution system. There were some discounts to it. So NPPD or the city of Norfolk sold that portion of the distribution system to Volcraft. Same thing happened at the airport and I think if you look at all of the larger industrial type complexes affiliated foods, that that's what happened over the years.
Is, is there a line of demarcation where, approximately where the city's district, where, where the city distribution system leased to NPPD stops and the rest of it goes on, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, there's a, there is a meter out there, or there's a pole out there.
And that's located approximately where?
With a meter on it. Um, if you know where the beacon is, the rotating beacon?
About right.
It's about fifty feet, fifty to a hundred feet west of there, maybe just a hair further, but it's along that line that runs just on the north side of the beacon. When you get just beyond, there's a building there. When you get just beyond that, there's a pole with a meter on it. Everything back to the east is NPPD operated. Everything to the west is airport authority operated.
And so just, and, and between the terminal and the road to the east, is that approximately half the way, a third of the way, what's?
Little over half, I would, if I was guessing that.
Yeah.
Just to give some semblance is where it's at, is all that I was asking.
I had, I had a copy of the map on my desk when I walked out, but, uh, maybe the wind blew it away out of where I went. I had that, I had that on my desk when I.
I was looking for electronic copy of it so I could put it up there, but I can't find one.
Oh, yeah.
And Dan, how, you said, how'd you come up with it pulls a one kilowatt per hour?
That was a, an electrician went out and put meters on it and told us it was pulling approximately just a little over eight amps at a hundred and twenty volts.
Okay. And so that pulls at a fairly constant rate all day long?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, so if you do the math.
Sure.
Eight times one-twenty is nine hundred and sixty and he said it was just a little bit over, so we went with that one KW, one thousand watts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the second question, um, our airport authority proposed to manage the lease relationship with barn stormers going forward. We did, we did pass a motion the other night that we would, uh, take a look at this lease and renegotiate it. There are, renegotiate parts of it. There's, there's a few parts that are, um, probably need cleaned up a little bit, such as, such as this electric meter. I mean, if we can, if we can figure out how, how we can get the electric meter on, uh, to them, I will do so and, and change the lease accordingly. So, so, uh, we're gonna go ahead and have these, uh, ongoing subcommittees as issues come up and meet. And, uh, it'd be my suggestion, uh, one of the things that doesn't look real well, three of our board members are stockholders in the restaurant. So if, if I could get volunteers of maybe a couple of you guys or something to be on this committee with us when, when we negotiate some issues, I would, I would ask that. Otherwise, otherwise the majority of our board is, has a conflict of interest.
Dan, I'm not, you know, I, I respect the fact that you're giving this council the opportunity, but I'm not sure that that's where this council belongs.
Okay.
As elected officials, you know, now.
And that's fine.
And, and I have no problem. Certainly, there's been some input, as you well know, from those that are, are citizens of this community with some true concerns as to the process. So I would like nothing more than to see us get this thing cleaned up and settled so that we can go forward in a positive mode. I'm, I'm thinking, there's still got to be some question, Dan, that's going to be asked of these elected officials as to, okay, as you're going forward now with, you know, the current billing. For instance, let's say, and I have no clue what that total dollar amount is, that comes into you as a monthly bill and how it is that you decide what part belongs to the restaurant and what part is truly the responsibility of the airport authority. There's other private businesses out there too, Dan, that probably are maybe, I don't want to say benefiting, but yeah, benefiting in a sense from the way the billing is done. And I think it's, it's important that the discussion, I would love to see this get resolved in some way, somehow, so that it's clean and there's no further, um, concerns as to the restaurant or anyone else getting.
Well, the very best way to do that would be to get, to get it separated off.
Absolutely.
And I, and I thought, and I thought we were going to get that done, uh, three or four months ago until we started meeting with NPPD and, and that got more and more and more and more complicated. So, um, so, so we're kind of stuck with what we got for, for a while until we decide how much it costs and what to do there.
Okay, will you do us a favor? I would ask of you then is, I would just like to see, um, when you get the full bill and how it is that you deliver it to the restaurant as far as their portion of, does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, okay.
I think that, okay.
So now, that, the, there's a transformer that feeds the restaurant and that has a meter on it by itself.
Okay.
So there's nobody else on there with that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that meter by itself is going to them.
Okay.
Now, the problem is, the weather bureau service is on there with them, so we've got a problem.
Okay.
So, so that's what we've done is deducted it off of there.
Okay.
So, and so we've got probably twenty-five, twenty-five meters that are around the airport that, that go to the different hangars and those, those kind of places.
Okay.
Dan, does the weather bureau, do they pay rent then and pay electrical, electrical bill then? I don't know, what does the weather bureau, what, what do we? I haven't, I haven't looked at that. Does the weather bureau, I don't know, um.
I think, I think the only thing that we pay for is what's hooked up to keep that center group running out there.
Well, I know, but.
I think the National.
The weather service gets their own bill. But what do they pay? Do they, do they pay us any lease on the?
No, not since they're not in the building anymore.
If they're not separated up. If they're not separated at the meter, how would they get their own bill?
Well, if there's a meter out by the center group, because there's a couple other meters out on the field.
Yeah, the, the weather rear equipment that's out there, we, we don't really know how they run that. I mean, this equipment is in our building and has been, so.
So you have a lease agreement with them that?
We do not have any agreement with the National Weather Service.
So you don't get paid anything from the National Weather Service?
No.
But their equipment's using power that costs the city money, is what I'm getting out of that?
Yeah.
Or, or paying that?
It's providing the weather for this community.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's providing a service for us. I understand that, I understand that. But it's just part of this topic, so I was just curious.
They don't have a lease with anybody out on the field? I mean, they, they have to have a lease with somebody. I have to go through the old FAA leases, because part of that is, the part that's been down is, has something to do with the FAA and the phone lines that run part of that. Because the FAA maintains that and they are billed for that part. I know that, I do a lot of work for the federal aviation administration and they, they come in and they rent, they rent or lease or, um, their areas from the airports. And traditionally, they don't, they don't pay any rent on it. I mean, they, they come in and they lease the malls or approach lights or the glide slope or, or the, the Pappy area and then they provide that service, but they, they don't pay, pay the airport every month for that, for that lane.
No, they own, they own the navigational aids and there are a certain amount of them and they're on the airport and they maintain them. So if something goes down, it gets reported to the FAA and they come out and fix it.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Any other requests of them while we have them here, Jim?
Well, and I just had a question, Dan. So we've got this interim, for lack of a better term, agreement with the leasing out there that they're gonna pay an eighth of the, um, of that, ninety-seven hundred plus chump change, uh, each month. So what happens if they don't?
Well, we, they're in breach of their lease, so we'll terminate it.
Well, but my, the reason I ask the question is because they've been in breach of their lease, you know.
Yes.
Since, since last year at some point in time, well, even prior to that. So, I mean, that, that's, you know, that's kind of why we're at this point is because there's, there's been, um, yeah, you're in breach and we're gonna terminate it, but nothing seems, it doesn't seem to happen, so.
Yes, I know. Well, they got, um, they installed a sewer system, a, a septic system, and that cost them thirty-some thousand dollars because, I mean, that was all something they got caught with after they, after they moved in. So there's just been, there's been hardships and things going on there that have cost them quite a bit of money and, and they have spent additional money, um, on the city property. I mean, if they move out, they don't get the, they can't take the septic system with So yes, we have, we have, um, they've gotten behind on their electric bill and we've let it slide.
Okay, 'cause I, I guess, you know, wanting to hear the commitment that, okay, if it doesn't happen, if, if in, if in forty-five days from now, they're forty-five days behind on paying, you know, I, I think the citizens have a right to expect that some action be taken.
Okay. And what, what we planted, I mean, that was, that was, that was what we told them in these, um, subcommittee meetings and that's what the, the motion that we passed states.
However, and, I'm sorry, Jim, but, um, I think the, the point to be made there is my, what I hear you to say is by the end of the year. So by the end of the year, are you, you know, if they come forward at the end of the year and haven't met their obligation, then at that time, would the, be terminated? Or I think what Councilman Langy is alluding to is are you expecting one-eighth of that along with the current bill each month?
I'm expecting one-eighth of that along with the current month.
And you have explained that to them?
Yes.
Okay. I, you know, I, Councilman, um.
That's exactly what I was getting at, because I was at your meeting last Monday night and I didn't exactly hear that stated. It was, it was inferred, but it was never, and the motion didn't actually state that either, so.
Okay.
So, um, and I, you know, because since that time that I've been approached by citizens, I've said, "Well, is this gonna be a lump sum at the end of the year that they, that they, that they get a ride, uh, you know, we're in the fourth month now, that they get a ride eight months, uh, interest-free and don't have to do anything and then make a payment? Or if we get out eight months at the end of the year and they haven't paid any interest and haven't made any payment on the ninety-seven forty-one, we're just kicked out at that time?" Um, this, the, you know, the, the big thing was, you know, it was, um, I think plus a hundred and fifty and one of, one of the citizens said, you know, "That doesn't even cover the interest," so.
Okay, well, that, that one's over with now that we've determined what the, what the bill is. So it's the current bill plus one-eighth of the unpaid balance. And if I didn't get the motion right the other night, I'll make.
I didn't hear it, but I didn't see the minutes either, so.
I'll make a new motion and add, add that at the next meeting, so.
All right. I, you're challenged, you're challenged to go forward with that. I, you know, certainly, we respect the fact that you are the governing part. So if you're comfortable with that and you believe that we're doing right for our citizens that do pay the taxes, then I would say that we'll tell you to go forward and do as you've stated here. And let's, let's, don't let it get out of hand any longer. This hasn't been good for this community, I don't believe. It's caused a lot of consternation and certainly, I understand the passion of your board, Dan, I do. I get it. And I understand that, you know, there's been hard work by those that are in the restaurant trying to make that work to the best of their ability. But at some point, we gotta face realization here that, um, you know, there, there's some issues and it's not fair on the back of the taxpayers that do their part and our, and the restaurant owners too here in this community that probably struggle sometimes too. And we can't give them, you know, that peace that allows them not to have to take responsibility for their electric bill. So with that, we appreciate the fact that you're here in front of us. If there's any more questions or comments, um.
Well, the only, only comment I would have is that, unless there's something here I don't understand, there may be room for question number three we might want to ask you and have you come back at a future council meeting.
Okay.
That, that, uh, I suppose it would have to go back into a subcommittee, but I'm a little curious about the other folks out there that have electric bills and, and who pays and who doesn't and all of that kind of thing. So we may ask you to look into that a little bit too.
Okay, we, why don't we prepare a, repair, prepare a, a report or something and we'll send it to you and then if you got questions, like, we can come back or.
We have all of that.
I mean.
And everybody pays their electric bill.
Well.
Most everybody.
All right, very good. I would, I would suggest before you do that, that, that maybe let the subcommittee see if there's anything else that, that we would want to include in there too.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on to public hearings and related action here. First, we have a public hearing to consider a paving waiver at the request of Don Kretzinger on property located north of Monroe Avenue on Victory Road and described as part of the southwest quarter, the northwest quarter and part of the northwest quarter, northwest quarter, section thirty-six dash twenty-four dash one, i.e. sixteen eleven South Victory Road. So with that, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And who's gonna be talking to this? Trent?
I think Dick was wanting to talk to this one.
Dick, I see you get up, come on forward.
Oh, I was gonna defer the crap. I was deferring back.
How about both of you help us understand this, would you?
We'll get her.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
This is a request for a paving waiver for, uh, Ron Kretzinger, Kretzinger Farms down on, uh, South Victory Road. Uh, they're building a storage building, uh, on the east side of the road, uh, probably seven or eight hundred feet north of the T intersection with Monroe Avenue. Uh, the building's gonna be back, uh, I don't, God, it's been a long time since I've looked at this. Uh, the building is a fair distance back from Victory Road. Uh, what we're basically requesting is that they pave their parking and pave out to the setback line right now, which in this case would be eighty-three feet from the center of the road. Uh, the reason we're requesting that is, uh, the county intends to reconstruct Victory Road and, uh, Kretzingers don't really want to pay for a driveway that gets taken out right away as part of the reconstruction. Uh, the request is for two years and if there's anything in what was given to you that differs from what I'm saying, believe what was given to you.
And now what you're saying, is that what you're saying to me?
What's that?
And not what you're saying?
No, I don't remember all the details, so I'm just kind of making this up as I go, so.
That's comforting, Mr. Johnson, that's comforting.
Thank you.
But it makes.
I'll let Trent take the floor.
I'm gonna ask Trent if he's got any correction to what he shared with us.
Mayor and Council, Dick done very well on that one, so.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Dick at all?
The timeline for the county on that?
Uh, hopefully this year. Well, the thing that's driving it is, uh, Lyman Ritchie, we anticipate is gonna be moving over there next year with a gravel pit and we want to be ready for that. It'll be a lot easier to build the road before we're dealing with gravel trucks all the time.
So, excuse me, the thought then, I mean, the waiver, if we go, decide to grant it, but the county goes in and completes the road here, then he'll come back and do his thing? Yeah. But will he come back, you know, within the next construction season, I guess? You know, if, if the county doesn't get the road built until, you know, kind of, the good thing is if, if, I don't know what his road is proposed as, asphalt or concrete, but.
Concrete.
Okay, so if it's concrete, he's a little bit more limited on timeframe in the year as to when he can do it that way. So if the county gets the asphalt road done in October or November, he may not be able to do it until.
Right.
or November, he may not be able to do it until first-
And I think that's why we asked for two years, was to make sure we had time to get, get it done during a reasonable construction season.
Any other questions at all, Council? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, is there anyone else that may have questions or wanna, um, chime in on the request here? Okay, hearing done. Do we have a planning commission report, Beth?
The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the request for a two-year paving waiver for Ron Crutzinger at sixteen-eleven South Victory Road. Mr. Crutzinger is building a storage facility office at that address, and he plans to cement the parking lot, but is requesting a waiver for the driveway off Victory Road. The request is for two years, which allows for the hard surfacing of South Victory Road, at which time Mr. Crutzinger will pave the drive. The planning commission recommends approval of the two-year paving waiver on a nine-to-zero vote.
Okay, and with that, I will close this hearing and ask for a motion for consideration of Resolution Number Twenty-Fifteen-Dash-Seven, approving a hard, hard servicing waiver for Crutzinger Farms LLC.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion at all? If not, I'm sorry.
Just a question for Dennis. Dennis, uh, the way you read this, though, I mean, it's our option to order it in at, at what time that's done, then?
Order in the sidewalk or the-
The paving done. Site paving.
Yeah, I think it is either, they got up to two years to do it.
I, I think, I think the way the resolution is written, your direction should be directed to number two on the second page, that the hard surfing mods, hard surfacing modifications shall be for a period of two years, expiring April twentieth, twenty-seventeen. So, there should be concrete there two years from today.
Very good. All right. If no further questions or comments, I would ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution Twenty-Fifteen-Seven is adopted.
All right. And next is a public hearing amending the city's comp plan at twelve-sixteen West Monroe Avenue from County Industrial District to Industrial at the request of Sat Brothers Incorporated. I would open this hearing and is, do you wanna combine that? Okay. And as well, um, thirty-four, public hearing at the request of Sat Brothers. This again, I would open for a zoning change from I-three Limited Industrial to I-two Heavy at twelve-sixteen West Monroe Avenue. So, opening both of those and asking you to come forward, state your name for us, sign in, and speak to us.
Well, my name is Shane Burns. I'm general manager at Sat Brothers Norfolk. And basically, in communication with the city, um, basically, we were in the county industrial tract, and we, to do exactly what we want to do with, I believe it's the retail aspect of it, um, we have to be zoned in the city itself. We had a meeting about this on April sixth with commit, county, with the city commissioners, uh, saying that went good, so now we're here. That leads us to this point. And as well, we have, we are requesting zoning change from I-three to I-two. Basically, what our plans are is we're just gonna be wholesale for petroleum products. We'll have very little, but we will have retail as well, um, in your lubricants, your, I mean, we will do propane, um, self-fuel. Obviously, we won't house the fuel and stuff at our location. We'll be pulling that from the terminal north of town.
Okay. Any questions at all for him? Anyone? Okay. All right. Thanks, Shane, appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak to either or may have questions of? Okay. Then if no further discussion, Beth, planning commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held public hearing at the request of Sat Brothers. Um, they want to locate at twelve-sixteen West Monroe with a wholesale petroleum business. The property was in a county industrial tract, and that was removed. The planning commission recommends approval on a nine-to-zero vote.
All right, does that take care of both?
Oh, yes.
All right. She, pardon me?
Yes, it does.
It does. All right. All right. So, with that being said, I'm gonna close the hearing and first ask for consideration of Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Nine, amending the city council's comprehensive plan from County Industrial District to Industrial at twelve-sixteen West Monroe Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration Ordinance Number Five-Three-Three-Nine.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion at all? All right, short, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Nine carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Nine on second and third reading.
All right, we have a motion in a second to suspend the rules and pass Ordinance Number Five-Three-Three-Nine on second and third. Any discussion or concerns at all? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Nine carries on second and third.
All right, and we'll look then at consideration of Ordinance Number Five-Three-Four-O, changing the zoning from I-three Light Industrial to I-two Heavy Industrial at twelve-sixteen West Monroe Avenue at the request of Sat Brothers.
Your Honor, I would offer- Fifty-three forty, please.
We have a motion for introduction. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion at all? How about a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
If, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Five-Three-Four-Zero carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance Fifty-three Forty on second and third.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass Ordinance Five-Three-Four-O on second and third reading. If no further discussion or concerns, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Fifty-three Forty carries on second and third.
Okay. Now, we're looking at consideration of Ordinance Number Five-Three-Three-Eight, annexing property located at twelve-sixteen West Monroe Avenue. Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Eight passed on first reading at the April sixth, October fifteenth city council meeting, and if you remember, needs to have separate action here on the second reading. So, do I have a motion for consideration of Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Eight?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for consideration of Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Eight on second reading. Any further discussion at all? Short title again, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to annex to said city part of the south half of the north half of section thirty-four Township Twenty-four North Range One West of the Sixth Principal Meridian in Madison County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and to provide that this ordinance be published in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Five-Three-Three-Eight carries on second reading only.
All right, and next is consideration of Resolution Twenty-Fifteen-Dash-Eight, approving the final plat of Riviera Edition located at two oh four West Sherwood Road and its subdivision agreement. I'm looking for consideration in this resolution.
Mayor, I'll make a move for consideration of Resolution Number Twenty-Fifteen-Dash-Eight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the Resolution Twenty-Fifteen for the final plat of the Riviera Edition, Riviera Edition at two oh four West Sherwood Road. Discussion at all? Anything, Trent, that you wanna advise of here?
Mayor and Council, I, I think you're probably aware of this a little bit, but , uh, Lyman Ritchie is, is buying this. Um, they're doing a lot split there, uh, just so that they can pump, uh, one, uh, anchor lot two. I didn't, and then Lot One is gonna be, remain the same out front, where there's a, a building already placed and a driveway in. So, pretty, pretty simple. Um, gives, gives the avenue for some utilities to come in there in the, in the future, and, and also it widens the, the road there just a little bit on Sherwood, so. Nothing more.
Okay. Any questions for Trent at all, Council? If not, then I would ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution Twenty-Fifteen-Dash-Eight is adopted.
And next is consideration of Resolution Twenty-Fifteen-Dash-Nine, approving a sidewalk waiver for Riviera Edition located at two oh four West Sherwood Road.
Your Honor, I would move consideration of Resolution Twenty-Fifteen-Dash-Nine.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, and we have a motion with a second. Discussion at all? Anything on this at all, Trent? Any questions for Trent? If not, I'm gonna ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution Twenty-Fifteen-Dash-Nine is adopted.
Okay, we're moving on to consideration of approval of an engineering contract with JEO Consulting Group for the Norfolk Riverfront Trail Project for a lump sum of a hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Could I have a motion for consideration?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second, and it looks to me like Mark is here to tell us about it.
Oh, yeah, uh, this is the, if, in reference to the trail that's there from Third, that's gonna be from Third and Elm to Cottonwood, kinda goes through Johnson Park there. This is the trail that we, were awarded the grant through Game and Parks, uh, for the design and construction of it. Uh, this agreement is for the design, environmental permitting, um, bidding phases and assistance with right-of-way acquisition, um, for all those, so basically up until point of construction is what this agreement is for. Um, it's, like I said, it's funded through Game and Parks. Uh, I think, uh, Seven Cities Century, uh, the bike ride, uh, contributed some dollars, and so has the, the lower Elkhorn. NRD is also contributor to this project, so.
Great partners in this, so. Any questions at all? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, next, we're looking for consideration of approval of the Norfolk Tree Bud Program, which gives the option to Norfolk utility customers to add a two-dollar donation to their water bill with the donation to be used for the purchase, the planning and the maintenance of trees on city property owned or controlled property. Um, again, I would ask for consideration.
I'd make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Certainly, I think there was discussion that was shared with us during the proclamation part of this. Unless anybody has any further questions, Diane is still here.
Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to the tree board and Dr. Serber for taking on this effort. I know they, um, put a lot of work into it, and I think it's innovative, and, uh, thank them for thinking ahead about the ashcore problem as well, so.
Very good. Can't agree more. They're a hard-working group, so. Any, anything else from any of this, Council? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Consideration of Ordinance Number Fifty-three Forty-One, which makes Iron Horse Drive a one-way street from Seventh Street East and then north to Prospect Avenue. Do I have a motion for consideration?
So, move, Your Honor. Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second, and it looks to me like we have Chief Meiser in front of us to tell us why.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, Mayor and members of the council, uh, this ordinance proposes to make Iron Horse Drive a one-way street, uh, from Seventh Street going east and then curving around to the north to Prospect Avenue. Uh, as most of you are aware, uh, when the post office relocated, uh, to the main office down off of Omaha Avenue, they were forced to close their drop-off mailboxes there, both in front and also on Fifth Street. Uh, after that happened, Postmaster Kittleson, uh, approached the city and asked if there might be a location in the downtown that could be utilized to allow four drop-off boxes to remain in the downtown for the convenience of those working downtown. Uh, we searched throughout the downtown, we looked at a number of locations, uh, and, and really could not find, uh, anything that really seemed to be ideal. Uh, finally, it was suggested that we look at Iron Horse Drive. Uh, we looked at that. Uh, the reason why we have to make it a one-way street is in order to drop off mail while the driver is still in the vehicle, they have to be able to put their vehicle left-side curb. So, they would be actually on the opposite lane of travel if it remained a two-way street. So, that's why we would propose to make it a one-way street. Uh, the reason that it, it appeared to be, uh, something suitable for this purpose is that it really is not a through street. Uh, it is a local traffic street. Uh, most of the traffic that would go on Seventh Street or Prospect Street would probably not look at that as a shortcut to go where they're, where they would be going. I did contact, uh, the managers or owners of each of the businesses on Iron Horse Drive, told them what it was that we were proposing, why we were proposing that. None of them expressed, uh, any concern or opposition to actually making it a one-way street. So, uh, we would recommend that we go ahead and, and take that action tonight. Uh, I'd like to recommend, uh, if it pleased the council, that you just pass this on, on one reading tonight. Uh, this would allow, uh, anybody in the public who might have a comment that they would like to make, they could contact me, they could contact the city administrator, or one of their elected officials, uh, just let them know maybe what they thought. Uh, it will also take some time for the postal service to, uh, make the preparations. Uh, Postmaster Kittleson is here tonight. Uh, he has told me that he has received, uh, authorization from his supervisors to go ahead and pay for the placement of a concrete pad in the terrace, uh, on the north side of the street where those, uh, post office boxes would be located. And so, he would, uh, put that out for bid and would look at getting someone, uh, contracted who would actually place the concrete there. They would put the boxes in, and then, uh, we'd just start dropping it off if you would see fit to approve this.
Okay, Chief. Any questions for?
Uh, Chief, that would, uh, we'd get this all passed, that would go into effect after Prospect and Seventh Street is-
Yes, yes.
Taken care of.
By the time we could get this done, I believe that they're looking at, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but around, uh, three weeks, four weeks-
Sorry.
-in order to have that completed and the street open. And I believe it will take at least that long for us to be able to get the arrangements made for the concrete and all of that.
Thought it would, but I thought, just bring it up anyways. And I thought it would, but I thought, just bring it out anyway, so, thank you.
Yes, no, we would not wanna do that until, till that was open.
Thank you.
I don't really have a question, Chief. I know you did look around, and it is hard to find a place. I was in the subcommittee that talked about this a little bit. I did do a little investigation. There's, there's a drop box up by Godfathers', and there's a few around the area, too. Maybe not as centrally located as they want them. I'm, I'm a little disappointed in the post office, for, they were here about a year ago and gave us a chance to respond to them moving, which I know the mayor did, and a lot of people got online and did, and it didn't seem to make any difference. As a matter of fact, I've, I've heard rumors that they had already made their mind up, and that disappoints me a lot that they didn't look ahead and try and get this century located before they moved or shut down. So, I am probably gonna vote against it tonight, not because of the area that you chose or we chose, but just because I think they should've been in a bigger part of it and helped out with the, with the answer rather than, now we need, we got a problem, you fix it for us, type thing. And I'm, I'm just a little disappointed in that, so.
Okay, Councilman. Anyone else have comments or concerns? I personally feel that, um, it's a service that we need to work with our citizens and provide, so, um, I'm certainly supportive, and, and I appreciate the fact that you've done the visit with the neighbors down there. I think that's important. They realize what that means to them and seem to have no opposition, so thanks for your efforts on that, too. So- So, any further discussion or comments? How about a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk to amend Section 24-94 of the Official City Code to designate Iron Horse Drive as a one-way street with an east and north direction of travel to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, and with that, please vote.
Voting in favor of Ordinance 5341. Councilmen Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Clausen, Murin, Moaning file voting against Faust. Ordinance 5341 carries on first reading.
Okay, and I think we'll certainly honor your request there as well, Chief, and move on. So, looking for consideration of Ordinance Number 5342, which prohibits parking on the north side of Iron Horse Drive from the east curb line of Seventh Street to 330 feet east of the, east curb line of Seventh Street.
Your Honor.
Thanks, Jim. Go ahead.
I do ordinance Number 5342.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Sir.
Apologize for cutting you off there.
Nope, that's all right.
Councilman, I'm just so anxious to jump in. Get this going. This, this would be the follow-up. It would be taking the parking off on the north side of the street to allow a lane for drivers to pull up left-side to curb and actually drop their mail off at the mailboxes. There is a photo that, that accompanies the packet that, that shows where it's at. Basically, we would be looking at taking parking off from Seventh Street on that north side up to almost where the street begins to curve around. One of the concerns that the folks at the probation office had was that there are some days of the week that they have a lot of people coming in for testing, and so they have a lot of parking on both sides of the street. But they told me they never go around that curve part, so I don't believe that there should be any interference with that. That's the only concern I had expressed to me about any parking there. So, once this has been authorized, we will then work with the postal service to identify where that pad would go, and we'll get it marked out so that when they're ready, they can go ahead and put it in, and we'll start dropping off mail.
Okay. Very good. Any questions at all on that piece of it? All right, do we have a short title here again, Beth?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-164 of the Official City Code to restrict parking on Iron Horse Drive to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All Councilmen, Council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5342 carries on first reading.
Okay, may as well just move on and let this all come back to us. Next would be consideration of approval of a real estate purchase agreement and all related documents with Edward F. Shrant, Michael J. Shrant, and Pat Shrant to purchase a portion of property at 909 East Omaha Avenue for the construction and the maintenance of a concrete trail from the flood control to Bluff Avenue. Looking for a motion for consideration?
I'd make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Mark.
I'm back.
Speak to us.
This is for one of the three parcels needed for the construction of the trail that's going to get us from the flood control along the west side of the North Fork of the Elkhorn River over to Bluff. You approved the construction contract last fall, I believe, and we worked through the rideaway this winter, and I believe you approved the two easements on the consent agenda, so this is the third piece of property needed to complete that project. Any questions you have on this?
Council, any questions at all? This is actually ownership of the piece of property.
Yes, this one we're all together for easement. This is ownership.
Right. Okay. Discussion questions, anyone? Hearing none? Thank you, Mark. Council, please vote.
All Council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
How we doing, Beth? Are we going a little faster for you? I'm sorry. Consideration of approval of a real estate purchase agreement received on Wednesday, April 15, 2015, from the Integrated Life Choices for the sale of the old Council Chamber's office located at 309 West Madison for 1,000, I'm sorry, $178,000.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
We have a motion with a second, and we have before us Mr. Lyle that's going to speak to this.
Good evening, Mayor and council staff. As you know, this building has been on, for sale for about a year and a half or so, but we really started marketing it a little harder at the beginning of the year. As luck would have it, we had two purchase offers in pretty rapid succession, and this was the results of the follow-up discussion that we had with the subcommittee, and I strongly encourage you to accept it.
Okay, any questions for him?
I don't have any questions. I've known it's been on the market. I've, I've known several people that have looked at it. I actually heard somebody else was very interested about six months ago, but it must not have worked out that good. But this, this is a good choice, this is a good group, and I think it'll fit their needs well, so.
I agree.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Thanks for your work on that, Lyle. Appreciate it. And with that, I would ask you to please vote.
All Council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that was the agreement. Now we're looking for consideration of Ordinance Number 5343, authorizing the sale of 309 West Madison Avenue to the Integrated Life Choices, Inc., for the purchase price of $178,000.
Your Honor, I'll introduce Ordinance 5343 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion with a second? Any further discussion at all? If not, I think Beth has a short title for us.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to authorize the sale of city property to provide the terms of sale and authorize the mayor to execute and deliver a warranty deed to the property to provide for a remanagement to said sale as provided by law to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, please vote.
All Council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5343 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5343 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 5343 on second and third reading. If no concerns or further suggestions, I would ask you to vote.
All Council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5343 carries on second and third readings.
Okay, next is consideration of approval for staff to accept an engineering contract with JEO Consulting Group to provide the standard architectural design services for the proposed Norfolk Vehicle Storage Building.
Your Honor, I move consideration, or move the agreement between the owner and the architect.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Mr. Lyle, you're speaking again to us?
Yes.
And being great.
As luck would have it. This is the, the first step, or the next step in getting a building built down at the street shop complex to accommodate the parks division that will most likely be displaced from their current building at Johnson's Park. This has been negotiated up and down and back and forth for, for quite a while since before I was here. I neglected to put in here, the, the cost of the construction documents was $31,900, and the, the estimates that we got for the building are $850,000.
That's a nice garage, sir.
I beg your pardon?
I think that's a nice storage building for vehicles.
It is, it is a nice storage building, and it's, it's higher than what was initially budgeted for, but, and the staff that surrounds me can hopefully chime in as well. The project has grown over time. It will be nice to have, have all the city buildings down there in one location next to, together with Fuel, Fuel Point. The staff will all be right there, won't be over there in Johnson's Park. And I'm, I'll answer the questions that you have for, for me. I'm, I'm sure there are some, so fire away.
Well, the obvious question is, how did it get so high? What are we hitting for the, for the dollar?
The numbers that you, we were basing it off of, that was, initially was $410,000. And as we got into the process and learned what was required and what was needed, the plan expanded, so did the cost. I feel fully confident that we can still make the building work, and it's unfortunate that it's, it's going to be that, that much higher, but.
Did we go to bed on the earlier plan?
Say that again?
Did we bid out on the earlier?
No, we didn't bid. That was a, that was a staff, that was a staff estimate from one of our prior staffs that's not with the city anymore. So, estimated that low. Didn't include some of the site work that was needed for that, for that facility. Since then, we've moved the building slightly over to the more centrally located on that parcel. It was going to be jammed up against Ninth, Ninth Street, which is a residential neighborhood. We wanted to move it over closer to Eighth Street, which is more commercially centered and is going to create a better flow for our vehicles coming in and coming out of the street shop. Also, we got a drive-through bay included in the building, which was not included in the building prior to that. So, when we sat down with all the street staff and really looked at our needs and how we were going to utilize that, the building changed a bit. That, that process wasn't done in great detail prior, prior to, and when that estimate came forward, the estimate was low. Obviously, it was low. That was four years ago, approximately three to four years ago when that first estimate came out, so. This includes, the new estimate includes getting the project completely done, where the old estimate did not include that. Included the building, has a pre-engineered building. It did include, again, the site work and some of the preliminary design work that needed to be included in that, in the project, so. It was an underestimate.
When do we propose for this to be happening? Should it be approved?
Hopefully this fall, because some of the staff, city staff, Jim Dooley's staff is going to do a portion of the work themselves. So if the building can be completed by this fall, they can work on it this winter.
Is there anything that says that gives us enough time to go out for bid?
Well.
The, when he's saying this fall, a realistic timeframe is, is it's probably going to be completed in January, February timeframe. We're hoping to get the, the bid documents prepared to the council so that we can get a bid in time for the contractor to get the footings in before the ground freezes. Pre-engineered building, if you can get the footings in, they can do most of the rest of it even with some inclement weather. They get the floor and the footings in, they can put up the steel frame even after it turns cold.
So the, the answer would be yes?
Yes, we'll have, we will have time to do it, and, and it's going to be more like a winter completion timeframe.
Okay.
Is what, I guess is what the gist of my comments were.
What are we looking at? Are our own people doing in this, then, to?
Well, part of the, Jim was going to do the electrical and.
Electrical, that's all.
And that's it?
We will bid the concrete work as an alternate, but what we were going to primarily have them do was the, the electrical work, and that's included in the, that's included in this estimate, so.
Yeah.
We won't have to quite find all $850,000 as cash. Some of it will be opportunity costs. If we get an opportunity in that February, March timeframe, Jim's got crews that can probably more effectively be working on the electrical in this building than trying to do things on the street unless we're getting a lot of snow. It's winter time work.
This will allow parks to fully move into this facility?
The parks will actually go down to a separate building down there, and that's going to displace some of Jim Dooley's vehicles so they will be moved into this building.
This will primarily be a public safety and public works street facility. Majority being the street facility, the build, the vehicles that are coming out of the centrally located building that Lyle's referencing there is going to be refamed a bit to house the Parks Department that's coming, going to be displaced from Johnson Park. And Johnson Park buildings will be demolished to make room for the trail and the improvements to Johnson Park moving forward. Then the street, the displacement at the street shop, the Parks Building, they will get the new building. So we're moving and shifting, shifting staff and mostly equipment, obviously, to this new building.
And a portion of. Yeah. A portion of the building, 25% will be fires for, for storage.
Fire and police actually.
And police.
Storage inside this building.
What's overall, what's the overall footprint of the building? 12,000 square feet?
Eighty by 150.
Oh, what?
Eighty by 150, 12,000 square feet, sitting immediately north of the, of the existing office building area. This estimate does have 20% contingencies in it due to the very preliminary nature of where we're at, not realizing total of the amount of site work we've got to do yet, where we're going to get our utility connections. And then we're going to have to deal with, we've got a soils report on its way, dealing with, part of this building's going to be over where the old Abler Building was before, so. We've got a corner of the building that we have to look at the soils there, so.
While on that, prices are also the demolition of the two buildings over at Johnson's Park, then?
It's already done, actually.
Okay.
Well, no, excuse me, the Johnson's Park building?
Yes.
No.
No, that's not included in that. I thought you were talking about the, the building that was down there.
Is that included in the trail?
No.
Okay.
That'll be a budgeted item coming forward in the budget discussion moving forward in June for next year.
The design fees are part of the $850,000, or is that in addition to it?
Yes, I can, I'll take, I can give you the, the breakdown of it, the.
Good one, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually $848,000, $848,000 and 86. The design fees are incorporated into that, the electrical, and a 20% contingency like Mr. Smith said.
Any other questions or concerns or comments, Council?
When are we, are we, is that going to be proposed to be passed in the upcoming budget to fund the additional overages on what was budgeted?
Prior adjustments to our capital improvements program for the funding.
Big break.
We're making adjustments to our capital improvements program for the funding.
To be approved in the upcoming budget?
Yes.
Yes.
So we need to approve that budget before we approve the funding of this building? How's that work?
We're going to, we will have to adjust that in our capital improvements program moving forward. I mean, it's an adjustment that we will, we'll look at our budget, and we'll have to make cuts to fund the building going forward if you want to make the approval tonight. So we'll have to make that commitment to you as, as a staff to find those dollars for you in the budget.
I think that's your point, is it, Councilman? Yeah.
What you're doing is you're prioritizing this building as the number-one priority in next year's capital improvement program. That's the, that's what you're effectively doing if you tell us, or having a design sitting on the shelf that you don't pull the trigger on.
And possibly nobody, no place for them to go in if their building gets taken down.
Are the funds there, you think, to make the necessary cuts to?
And I think that's part of the question, too. What are we losing? You know, what do you see us to be cutting?
It potentially deferring other park improvements. I mean, a portion of this really is a park expenditure, because we're, a good portion of it is, while they're not going in the building, they're being relocated down to the street division, which creates the need to, for additional storage space. 25% of it will come from public safety bonds, which we do traditionally. Probably some of it will be recommended to come from Keno, part of it because of the recreation or the park improvements. What's driving our timeline was the grant that we got.
Right.
That says if we really want to do the grant, do the trail, the best way for the long term, we need to move that building or move, yeah, move the park operation out of that location, so. I know it's uncomfortable. I know it's uncomfortable asking you to approve something that you haven't had a chance to prioritize, but, you know, capital improvement program, we're typically probably $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 a year on general fund type expenditures in that capital improvement program, year in and year out, so.
And I will add to that, if it's, up until I got this very shortly ago, and this is the $850,000 estimate, I was crunching numbers to make $800,000 work. If you take $800,000, 25% of that will be public safety bonds, remaining $600,000 that would have to be factored in. Of that, we still have about $300,000, a little more than $300,000 budgeted from the old building. So we have less than $300,000 to come up with. Like Dennis said, I think we can make it fit, and with the keynote, I have confidence.
I know we have some of the budget that has been there for a few years. The only thing I don't want to see is that past budget get drained in the parks just to make this happen. So you're going to need to be creative to make it work without draining one guy's budget, too. I don't want to see the parks just stop, so we'll have to watch out for that.
No, we'll apply it across the whole capital improvements program. You'll see the deferments coming and what's being deferred and what's not. Uncomfortableness is, do you want us to move fast? Do you want us to meet this timeline or not? That's really the question. I mean, if you don't want us to meet this timeline, we'd push it back, and then we'd put this into the budgetary process, and the building would probably be built and bid and built next year sometime, all things being equal.
The uncomfortableness to me is not building the building, it's the additional cost of the building.
Oh, yeah. Part of it, the underestimate was driving the timeline as well.
Yeah, that's the head-scratcher. That's a 300-pound gorilla in the room, so.
Understood.
So anyway, of the budget, what percentage of, what percentage of budget is that $300,000? In next year's, of the total capital improvements budget? Good, to tell you the truth, I can't remember.
I don't, I'm not sure about as a percentage.
Yeah.
There's total capital improvements in the city budget of tens of millions of dollars, but a portion of this that come out of it would be not the utilities funds, which is a big part of that, not the streets, which is a chaff expenditures. I don't know without looking exactly what percentage is in the overall budget. I think it's, I think we can come up with a way to make this work. Lyle's been looking at it, and I've been looking at it, Dennis has been looking at it. And we may have to cut back some things, some things we have in the current year budget, I think, will probably come in lower than what we had anticipated. For instance, we had $400,000 in there for administration software. We're still making some upgrades to that, getting all the equipment we need in for that. I anticipate there'll be a lot of that money left over. So there's some things in the budget that, well, this is way higher than what we anticipated. There's some things in the budget that are going to be way lower than what we anticipate. And I think we can make this thing fit together and work in our capital improvement program budget going forward. We haven't exactly part of what I said that's going to be, that'll be up to the council, but we have looked, and we can see there's some room in that budget, because not, although this is a bad surprise, way higher than we expected, there's also some good surprises in that budget, too. They're going to be coming in lower than we expect.
What's the heartache if we don't do it? Don't act tonight?
We're going to, you'll miss, you'll miss the winter, which is a good favorable time for us to do some of that interior work and hopefully have some opportunity cost put into this building as far as the electrical system goes. We want to go ahead with the trail next year.
Understand that.
Twenty and sixteen. So there's work to be done at those buildings for demolition and the grading plan of all of Johnson Park as well. You're not committed to the $800,000 tonight necessarily.
Well, and I, you know, I always get concerned when we start talking about our keynote dollars, because I think we always are challenged as where we are with them and where we've committed. So that always concerns me a little bit, but, please.
My thing, biggest concern would be that we would get roped into a budget increase next year, because this is being put into our budget. You know, we pass on a level, different level, you know, level one, level two, level three with a certain portion of increase. If this came in, you know, the overages that we'll have to approve next year would have to show a zero increase in the budget to make it. And then we would go into talks of increase after this was already fit into our budget at a 0% increase for next year. That means the cuts would have to be hard and whatnot to come up with your $300,000 so when we approve it. Otherwise, I think it looks like we're already increasing our budget for next year.
If not...
No, but I mean, that's when we read our, you know, you're going to have to, it's going to have to read in our next year's budget, in our capital expenditure budget, as an itemized, as an item. We've always, we've already voted to approve 300 and some thousand of it. But now we're voting tonight to improve another 300,000, essentially, like you're saying, increase. That's going to have to be put into next year's budget. What I'm saying is, I don't want to see an increase. Do you follow, you follow me how that could, it could be misconstrued that way? You know, because we're the ones who are going to have to answer those questions when asked.
But think of it, think about it from this way. We have annually, in the general fund, probably a million dollars' worth of capital construction projects that are funded from various sources. Transfers from the general fund, property tax or sales tax, keynote money, public safety money. What you're really doing is just saying that out of that million dollars, we're allocating $300,000 in next year's budget already for this building.
I understand, but are you saying that would be our beginning, you know, our ending and beginning balance that we talk about?
No, this isn't, this is going to be in the capital construction account in...
You know, because traditionally, we're under one, we underspend by 1.6 million, if you're looking at it. And so are we saying that that 1.6, we're already allocating 300,000?
No, we're really talking about in the capital construction budget. And that budget that typically is that 500 to a million dollars. That, all you're doing is saying that this is the number one priority for that 500 to a million dollars that you routinely spend there.
So this would by no means have any impact on, you know, any balance going into next year?
It should. It should. I mean, it could have an impact if we went in and said we were going to spend a million, 300,000, when we've been traditionally spending a million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the timeline's important to continue to maintain here, but I follow up on Councilman Foss's concern about parks taking the big hit on this and the CIP. And I think we want to avoid that as much as possible. And Shane, as you said, you think that it can be spread out throughout different projects. I think that's important, so that parks take the big hit from it.
We don't want anybody to take, take any particular division to take a beating in their capital improvements program, and so we want to spread that out. We may have to make a hard decision on one particular project or another in that capital improvements program or account, but that's a decision you'll make at budget time.
I guess I would hate to see us not be moving forward with this, because how it impacts, what's going to happen with the trails and additional items that way. And, you know, we're talking, what, 300,000 basically in the difference. And we got 178 today, so we're halfway there already, two-thirds of the way there already. I mean, all we've got to do is sell another building, so.
Well, good thinking, Councilman, get her done. All right, any other discussion or question, or, I appreciate the questions, it was a good discussion, so. Let's see. If nothing further, I think we're ready to vote to accept an engineering contract with JEO Consultants. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, next is consideration of acceptance of Meadowridge Partners LLC's November 14, 2014 offer of $500,000 as complete payment of the March 20, 1995 promissory note for the loan of home grants proceeds from the city to Meadowridge Partners LLC, and authorizing officers of the city to execute any and all documents necessary to make this payoff happen. I entertain a motion for consideration of...
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
All right. Second, second, Nick?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion with a second, and standing before us. Good evening.
I am Jan Einspar, and I'm here on behalf of Meadowridge Partners. We had, the partners had sent a letter in November of 2014 to the city requesting this payoff. I'm assuming you have that in your packet. And we have met several times with the committee.
Subcommittee?
Subcommittee, and discussed it. There's been an analysis that Randy Gates has prepared for the committee members. And the committee members in our last meeting did vote to bring this to the council with the recommendation that you approve it. Just wanted to say unfortunately, we can't use this 500,000 to fund your park.
Yeah.
You're quite sure about that?
Well, it's my understanding that these were, originally, these funds were from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. And when Meadowridge Partners was putting together these apartment buildings and getting some other funds from the federal government, we came to the city and said, look, if the city applies for this grant, you can use this grant to help us. And so it's not money that has been collected just from the taxpayers of the city of Norfolk. This is economic development fund money, and it's to be used for that, it has to be used for that again. So unfortunately, no, you can't use it to...
Don't you know, Jan, everything's economic development in Philly.
As Courtney says, yes. But, and wouldn't it that be neat if you could do it? So I wanted to clarify, first of all, this wasn't, this isn't taxpayer money, and this basically is a win-win for everyone, because the city has been kind of getting trickling in based on our contract. This way, you've got the money sitting in your hand, kind of like the lottery players that you can have 10 million over the next 10 years, or you can have 5 million right now, which one do you want? And almost everybody says, give me the 5 million right now, so.
A bird in the hand.
Yeah, that's the, that's the bird in your hand, and we are asking that you would approve this so that everybody can move on. You don't have it on your books, we don't have it on our books. And it is a, it is a very fair offer based on present value and past performance.
Okay. Any questions to, from the council to address to Ms. Aymar, as she's standing before us?
I think it's important to speak on how we came to this dollar amount.
Right. Okay.
And I don't know if that needs to...
Well, do you have a copy of the, of the analysis that Randy Gates, is that in your packet?
That is not in the agenda packets. That was shared with the subcommittee. But part of that analysis, the subcommittee, one of the meetings, asked me to put together various scenarios, comparing what $500,000 now is worth compared to various streams of payments in the future. And one of the real problems you have with this particular loan is it's a residual receipts loan, which means it's only paid as cash flow is available. And this loan's about 20 years old, and until it was restructured in 2006, we had no son of loan. After 2006, we've had enough payments to reduce the loan value down to 756,952, I think it is.
Right, 952, you're right.
There was a total over the 20 years of 178,048 that were paid.
And so that, if you do the math, since the time we restructured that, we've gotten a...
Mike.
Do the math, since the time we, can you hear me now?
Yeah, better.
Do the math, since the time we restructured that in 2006, the average payments have been less than $25,000 a year. So one of the scenarios I looked at was $25,000 a year payments, what's that worth now? Or what's $500,000 worth now compared to that stream of payments over the next, it'd be more than 30 years before that would pay off this loan? Another scenario I looked at is, okay, let's assume that doubles. We know that the rent restrictions on these apartments expire in 2019, about four years out. We'd expect rents would go up at that time on the 19 apartments that are still rent restricted. That should increase cash flow. On the other hand, the apartment building keeps getting older and older and older, it'll be about 25 years old at that time, which is going to increase your repairs and maintenance expense. How that exactly shakes out, you don't know, but for purposes of illustration, I assume we'd get $50,000 a year payments. And that would pay the thing off in a little over 15 years, and what's that worth? And then, and another scenario I looked at is, well, this thing has a due date of March 15, 2025, 10 years out. What happens if we just get that lump sum, 3/4 of a million dollars, 20 years out? That's probably not realistically going to happen, because our loan is subordinate to a first mortgage, as long as there's a first mortgage out there. I doubt that first mortgage will be paid off at that point in time, when this thing was restructured in 2006 to help improve cash flow. The original loan was on 30-year amortization. The new loan that replaced it was also a 30-year amortization, which has a 10-year balloon, so you stretched out the maturity of that loan to improve the cash flow, or Meadowridge Partners did, which is some reason why we had cash flow to start making payments on our current loan. So I very well expect that first mortgage will be out there 10 years from now, so our mortgage won't become due and be payable until that first mortgage goes away. And who knows when that will happen? It may not happen if, depending on cash flow and repairs needed and that type of thing. So you're, you're looking at a very uncertain stream of payments. And the, here since 2006, we had two years where we got no residual receipts payments. I think one year we got 50 some thousand dollars of payments, but it's just been all over the place. But the scenario where you get $25,000 a year for the next 30 years, the discount rate on that stream of payments to get it to equal the $500,000 was at a 2.8...
8.9.
2.89% would make that stream of payments equal 500,000 now. So if you look at what inflation's done historically, long-term, it's been running around 3%. So if, between that period of time, inflation ran around 3%, we'd be better off taking the $500,000 now as opposed to waiting. On the other hand, if you're getting $50,000 a year, 5.65% makes that stream of payments equal the 500,000. Or if you get 3/4 of a million 10 years from now, the whole thing, then it's 4.23%. So we're guessing at what we're going to get. We've got a bird in the hand now with money that we can use right now to help address our housing shortage. And I think that's why the subcommittee voted to recommend that we take that money now as opposed to waiting for an uncertain stream of payments, that we don't know what those uncertain stream of payments will be. Who knows what inflation will be 30 years from now, or what interest rates will be 30 years from now? So it's really a, kind of a guessing game as to whether or not this is, if you look at just the dollars and cents aspect of it on a present value basis, whether this is a good thing or a bad thing. You know it's $500,000 we have now that we can use for affordable housing that we need now to help alleviate our housing shortage, as opposed to some unknown stream of payments that is going to be worth some unknown dollar amount depending on what inflation does in the future. So, yeah, that was the analysis I put together for the subcommittee.
Randy, I will tell you, as part of the subcommittee, I appreciated the report that you made. You made as good a sense out of a very complicated formula that I think any of us could hope for, so thank you for all the hard work on that. It does, comes down to a bird in the hand, and it's a pretty good-sized bird, so.
Yeah, right.
And this is a non-interest-bearing loan, as it is, so it's not like you're going to make better than 2.89% or...
Good point. Any other questions at all, Jan?
How's this going to help our current housing shortage, then?
Because you can use the 500,000 that you get from that and use it toward other housing
Yes, Councilman, the, this is considered to be program income, and... Yes, councilman, the, this is considered to be program income and the home program, and this original note was from a home grant, federal home loan grant, federal home grant. So we can use this, $500,000 we've got, or we will get if you approve this. We use that $500,000 for housing under the home program regulations. So we could use it to construct some new housing or, or down payment assistance. There's quite a few things we can do with that. There's a few things we can't do with it. We can't put an infrastructure in that would go towards a new housing development that's not allowed under the home rules. But there, there are a lot of housing things we can do with the home rules and ways we can utilize this money. I'm going to be working with Gary Holcomb and putting together a reuse program that would include these monies that we'll send off to DED to get their blessing on. And by the way, DED has said that they looked at this repayment and they said it's up to the city whether or not we take it. They don't have an, an opinion on yes or, or yes or no say on that. But they will look at our proposed reuse of those funds when we submit a revised reuse plan to them and say whether or not they're okay with that. But if it is dollars that restricted to making housing investments in Norfolk, it would go to benefit low to moderate income individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Jan, begin here, appreciate it. Okay. Any other discussion at all, council? If not, then I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. Randy, nice job. Appreciate your help there, too. Next is consideration of approval of an industrial development site analysis contract with Olson Associates in the amount of $22,500.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. And we have Courtney's here to talk to us about this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, you should have a copy of the contract in your packets, but this is something we've been talking about doing for quite some time. It's a budgeted item. This is a contract for industrial site identification and analysis. What we're looking for, Olson Associates will come in and help us with very objective criteria to take a look at approximately 15 sites and then narrow that down so we can determine what are the best areas for us as a community and as a county through our interlocal partnership with Madison County to grow industrially so that we know where to make investments, where to get option contracts, what sites to put forth for potential industries looking to locate in the state of Nebraska so that we can be competitive. So we're excited to get started on this. It'll be about a four-month process. We have a steering committee identified that would start meeting with the Olson Associates professionals in mid-May and hope to wrap up about August with these sites so that we could move forward subsequently on master planning. They're going to look at about 25 qualitative and quantitative site impact factors on each of these sites that we identify. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Courtney, is the county going to be paying a portion of this, 22.5?
Yeah, this actually comes out of the economic development budget, which is half-funded by Madison County. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Not so much questions, just a comment. This is really a tool for you and really a tool that we've been lacking in...
Yeah.
If, if we want to be progressive then and stay after these things, I think it's something we need to do and we need to do now.
Okay. If nothing further, thanks, Courtney. I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in affirmative, motion carries.
I'm thinking there's not another pa, oh, we got one more item, my fault. Consideration of approval to purchase a new and unused replacement wheel loader from Omaha Tractor Incorporated for the qualifying low bid of $100,000.
Make the motion, Your Honor.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion with a second and we have in front of us Mr. Newell.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is to replace a 2001 Hyundai loader. If you've seen your tally, there was a lower bid from Titan Machinery. That was for a 2015 Case 521 FXT. However, that didn't meet our spec. We specked out a minimum of 40 horsepower and they came in at 34 horsepower. So that's the reason we took the second bid. The rest of our bids did, did meet spec and so we're recommending that you go with the Omaha Tractor bid. And that's $122,500 with $22,500 for trade-in. And that trade-in is actually going to go to solid waste. They're going to just pay that, that trade-in value for that. So that loader's going to stand.
Sure, absolutely.
Hi.
My name is Gary Gertlusch and if you could just...
Sure, I can hand those out if you'll do me a favor and sign in for us, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. Here, Quinn. Give me a few, go this way. Yeah?
Okay. My name is Gary Gertlusch and with Titan Machinery. And what I've handed out to you is a couple things. I guess first of all, Jim, that was 140, that was 140 horse on the specification and we were 132 on the bid that was rejected. But, and otherwise, we did meet all those specifications. However, I do acknowledge that based on the specifications, it was at the, it was at the top end of the, of the, of the class of loader. But again, like I said, other than that, that particular spec, we, we met all specifications. What I'm asking you to consider, or at least to look at and make you aware of, is that there was not only $1,900 difference in the acquisition cost and we had, and it was provided on the bid, it comes with all case loaders and it's, I just want you to be aware of it, is that we have a 36-month, 3,000-hour preventative maintenance where the standard for the DUSAN would have been two years, one year, right? Two years powertrain, one years full machine premier? Okay. Which, which relates to that 36-month, 3,000-hour premier warranty on the second item. The preventive maintenance is actually where Titan will take care of the machine for three years. We will provide oil, we will provide filters, we will provide it, provide the labor. So it's for three years, there's no cost to you guys to maintain that 621F. Rear visibility is just something that's just by design. Case wheel loader, as you're aware of in the 621D, has the mid-mount radiator cooler, which doesn't have a radiator at the back, so it allows the hood to be sloped. That's, gives it a very good rear visibility. That's just, if you go down to the city right now, they have a 621D has that same design. That's, that's the, that's the rear visibility, that's a value, you know, as it is. I do want to make you aware that Titan does have a, have a resident service tech in Norfolk that they hired. Therefore, even though there would normally have been mileage costs associated with that preventive maintenance, that there is none for you guys because we have a tech in Norfolk. There's no mileage. You have case wheel loaders. At this point, you don't have any DUSAN. I know the guys have done their looking and that's up to Jim. I just wanted again to point out that, you know, the, the DUSAN is a Korean-made loader. The, it's, it's not on here. The case is made up in Fargo, North Dakota. It's, it's an American-made loader. Those things and also the, the, the fuel economy over the, the future of the test. We just, I just want the council to be aware that there's a significant potential savings over the three-year, next, next three-year period compared to the $1,900 acquisition and that there really was not specification-wise that much difference in, in the lower unit. But I do, but I do understand that you're talking about with your snow blower and things like that. So that's important to have the upper end of that weight. We were, we did meet the 24,000 pounds that was asked for. The, the, the DUSAN loader, I believe, is 26,000 pounds plus and the, and the caseload is about 28,000 pounds. So those are the things for your consideration. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to at least express this. I apologize for the late nature of, of giving this in front of you in the meeting here. Trying to hook up with some of the members and it, it didn't work out, some vacations and things. We got that all figured out, right, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming forward and asking the questions, so... Yep, okay.
Yeah, Mayor and, and Council, the reason we didn't take, we didn't take low bid is we didn't figure it was fair for the rest of our folks that submitted the bid because they could have possibly bid a smaller loader, too. In fact, Titan Machinery did submit one that met our spec, but they were the, but they were the third highest bid, so... So that's kind of, that's kind of where we was at with it. I actually turned this over to Pat McCullough. Pat's my loader guy. He's the guy that runs the machines. He went and, and researched the DUSAN. His concern was primarily to accept a bid that didn't meet his spec. And he felt that, that the low bid did not meet spec. So he wanted to go ahead and, and do the right thing and, and, and accept one that met all the specs. And, and the DUSAN does exceed all the specs according to Pat and that's, that's the reason why we recommend going into it.
Can I address as well?
Sure.
There's actually two other places that, the one that was kicked out didn't meet the spec. The spec required 140 net horsepower, 450 foot-pounds of torque. The model that was submitted was 448 foot-pounds of torque. The spec required six cylinders. The submitted model had four. And I'm, I'm sure that they have a great product and a great service year, three service year warranty. But I'm not quite sure it's exactly what, what's needed for the city. As I talked with Pat as well, they take care of all the oil lube maintenance work down there at the shop for the first year, or for all of it, to include the first year. It's just easier for them to just go do it as opposed to schedule it and make time arrangements to have staff come in or deliver it somewhere. They do their own diagnostics at the shop. And like Jim said, they had the calls on the DUSANs, DUSAN was, the references were very good, received very well.
Okay. Any questions?
What's, I didn't get parts for a DUSAN, I guess they...
They said they can overnight it. It's Bobcat out of, out of Omaha. So, and every, everybody that we talked to, as far as Pat, he said they, they had really good response from everybody that had the, the references. They gave him about a half dozen references and he checked up on them.
And it does have a one-year warranty. Also speaking with Pat, it sounds like if, if there's going to be issues found with, with the equipment, it'll be found in the first couple of months. It's been his historical reference. So if there is warranty issues, they have a one-year warranty. And after, after one year, then they seem to run pretty smoothly for the rest of their working, working life as far as averages go.
Pat, was there a reason we, I guess, requested 140 horsepower, 450 pounds of torque? I see what, nine horsepower difference in two pounds of torque, but there had to be a reason that you wanted 140 or a reason that you wanted six cylinders?
Yeah, for the reasons that you mentioned, for, for a blower, blower or whatever you might want to put onto that, onto that rig. I guess you're not only, you know, when you're, when you're talking the difference between that smaller loader versus a heavier, once you go up in horsepower, you're getting a heavier-duty loader, too. This DUSAN's 160 horse, I believe, is that right?
I don't have horsepower. I know it exceeds it, though.
But it exceeds it, exceeds it. You're getting a heavier-duty loader compared, and that's, that was Pat's concern. He thought that, yeah, that's, that's pretty close to the spec, but all the rest of these folks that came in here and bid this for us, they should have had that same opportunity to bid a, a smaller loader. Because he's considering that, which would be a smaller loader. That's the difference.
Typically, we go and look for a class of loader and then put a spec around that, trying not to spec anybody out. So with the overlapping classes, Case was able to get very close to the class with their, the requirements with their next lower class. They bid it. Some people will take that, some people will look and say, "No, we want the class." In our case, we're saying, we're trying to bid apples with apples. We want them to meet this minimum standards, which was going to be in that next class of loader, so... And I think the Titan dealer's request is, is that he's saying that for $1,900, my service package and warranty is, is worth that, is his argument, not that, that necessarily that you should be taking his low bid that didn't meet the spec.
If that's the case, then we should go with his other bid then, $101,900.
Mm-hmm. I see what you're saying.
We're strictly, we're trying to be fair. The folks came in here and bid this.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's our concern. They came and gave us an honest bid and, and we just felt obligated to give it to the ones that...
I believe that's why we've always instructed you as well, so I appreciate that.
Do we have any idea or do you keep records on our maintenance, on our, I mean...
Yeah, we do.
On our particular machines?
Yes.
So historically, I mean, we're, the, one that we're, that we're trading or moving to the, to the water department, with that run, I mean, he was talking $1,900 for three years, what's our maintenance cost us, what cost us on that unit for three years? Or I'm assuming you probably don't have?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that, but we could, I could get those numbers for you.
I guess that, it would be, be interesting what the offset is against, you know, if, if our costs are running considerably more than the $1,900 and it, you know, then that's, that's a point of consideration then, so...
Another point of consideration is if, it, that's fine if you want to do that, but this, 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 this offer is good for 30 days and, and we're in towards the end of that days. So if we wait, we'll have to potentially rebid it.
When you're going through your bidding process and all you're considering is what's fair, do you ever think you look over what's good money or what's smart money?
Try to do that with every purchase, actually. It...
You try to build that into your spec, though.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's, that's what you...
Because we, a lot of corners could be cut somewhere. If, if it's, if the spec just said payloader, we'd get a full gamut of things for a full range of possibilities. And when you narrow it down, we have things like this that come up that don't quite meet the spec. But to be, to be fair to everybody, we got to have a lot of costs across the board.
But getting back to Jim's point about the maintenance, three-year maintenance history, what that cost you, might be some good thought to that, you know, on a maintenance plan. I know we look at them, you know, so...
But when I spoke to Pat earlier today, they said they do almost all of it down there, too.
I, I understand that they do all of it, but they don't do it all with only cost.
I understand.
I mean, that, that cost is there regardless of whether we do it. You know, one, there's material there and two, there's man-hours there that could be done on, used on something else also that way. So, so it, I mean, that's, that's just why I asked...
Understood.
What, what the costs are because, you know, even if we jump back to the, to the, to the building project, even, even if we do the electrical in-house, we still have a cost to it because whoever is working on it in-house, we're paying them a, we're paying a salary for them, too. So it's the same as this, you know, whether that $1,900 equates out to, you know, if you want to divide it out, $850... you want to divide it out, 800 and what, $50 a year, no, not even that, 700, less than $700 a year, so.
Well, Jim, did you guys have any bid, anything in your bid that talked about the warranty minimum, you know?
I think it, the rest of them were one-year warranties. This was only three-year.
So your bid didn't specify any amount of warranty with it?
I, I did find on the website, it's 160 horse, that model number.
Yeah, which one?
The...
The, the, the one that you're recommending.
And I think most of the rest of them that went to that heavier loader is in that 160 horse. Jerseys, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
This isn't a complete picture, but I found some information on costs. I think we have four loaders in the street division. Our total labor repair costs last year ranged from $1,000 to $2,000 per unit. Per year. Would be a one-year cost, yeah, the one-year cost. And there aren't a lot of repair, there's no repair parts associated with those, so I'm guessing that most of that is preventive maintenance labor.
So what I'm hearing is that certainly you're awarding of is by the specifications that were set out there, the low bid. Are what we're saying is, are we saying that we need to be, and, and I'm not, I'm just asking this because it seems to me we're, we're trying to take in a lot more information right now than really what we ask them to do. And I get it, I understand, but isn't that kind of, I mean, we could probably have many of these others that may want to come back and give a little bit more information as well. If we're, if we're going to look at that kind of stuff, guys, I really think in all fairness, I appreciate what you're saying, I appreciate the fact that you brought it forward to us. It's been a great learning experience for me, but all that being said, how do you make a decision to think any differently now? I don't think so. I mean, I, and certainly, like I say, you are the, the voting members here, but I think at this point, they've done exactly what we've charged him to do. Again, like I say, I understand why he's here and, and the points to be made, but I almost think that needs to be something that's actually, if we're going to start taking those kind of things into consideration, then we're going to have to make a statement as such.
Yeah, we'd have to put in the spec.
Yeah, I think we should be open about that, yeah, and be part of the spec.
So, go ahead.
No, I, I guess at this point, unless anybody else... Sir?
Our specifica, our bidding process is such that the counsel does have some ability to make some value judgments.
Okay.
And what we try to do as a staff, give you the lowest cost estimate, best cost in the one that meets the specifications. If you're convinced that there's some more value there for the difference in the dollars, I think you most certainly have the ability to do that. And, you know, in this case, you would talk about the extended service contract and the extended warranty as being worth the, worth the $1,900. The next one is another $5,000 higher, so.
Do we, do we typically do that though? Do we typically, in purchases that we make, do we go after the extended warranties or we just use the one, usually go after the one-year warranty, then just kind of rely on ourselves to the...
Right. I mean, we, we typically don't look for extended, it's not something that we go out and, and look for and, and request. We want that standard, about one-year warranty. As the guy says, you get through the, the initial bugs or, or the one that came through the plan on a, you know, bad day, you know, that type of a thing. But, you know, most of this equipment is high-quality, it comes out and it runs and we don't have too many issues, so.
If we look at the low bid of $100,000, which is what we have budgeted, is $100,000.
Okay, now you're looking at the net total, is what you're saying now?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. And that first year, whoever we choose is going to give us the warranty. They offer the benefit of year two and year three at a cost of 1,000 to 2,000. So if you add that 1,000 to 2,000 into year two and year three, at, at 1,000 per year, we're up to their bid.
I think that's his point.
I have a question. Do we know, do the other ones offer a service contract or just a warranty? You know the answer to that question.
Not sure. I, I know they have the warranties, but I'm not, I can't say for the certainty.
I mean, I think you, the only thing I, the reason I was asking you, I think you're comparing apples and, apples and oranges compared to what I heard the Titan gentleman to say was they've got a three-year service that is a part of that bid.
It's all go to value.
So they're going to, you're going to come out, change the oil, provide the oil, provide the filters.
Life cost, energy efficiency rate is stated by the bidder.
Wow, when's the 30 days of the insurance? Do you know exactly?
Yeah, we opened these on the 30th, so.
Doesn't have to work as hard.
By then, okay.
Cardless, if we look at the warranty, that's one thing, but you're still getting a smaller tractor. You want the bigger tractor?
They're talking about the one that would actually meet our spec.
That one's 100.
Oh, they're talking about this one.
Right.
$1,900.
Yeah.
It'd be actually a little larger.
Right.
Okay. So that's the key thing, I think you want is the bigger tractor, not a smaller one, so.
The one that's met spec.
Yeah, but number one, but I mean, as far as...
Nobody in the, I don't think anybody in the discussion tonight has, has been advocating that we buy the smaller unit, even the, even the...
We're talking about the bid number two.
Right, correct.
Yeah. So out of those two, out of those two machines, what's the better machine?
Well, based on our research, the Dusan is as good a machine. I mean, we got glowing reports from everybody, every contractor that we called about that machine. And they just loved it. The ease of operation, maintenance, overnight, parts, all the way down the line, they just loved it. I don't know, they might have a list of people they call that says they love their machine, but everybody we called loved it. Low maintenance.
Which, which performs better spec-wise though, on the, if you look at the specs on the Titan bid to the Dusan, who's got more torque and horsepower?
They're pretty comparable. I, I don't know the numbers, I offed off my head, but it, all, all we were asking for was...
Well, I know, but then that would, you automatically kind of look, you know, take that into consideration.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't...
$1,900.
What was the difference, the 140 and the 132, because I have no idea what it, did I say something wrong there?
No, no, that's correct.
140?
140 horsepower versus 132.
Okay.
The spec was actually closer to the lower end.
At 132 though. Yeah, I understand that.
No, this is 160.
And that's what we do.
This is the 132, which is out.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, how, how about you down there?
The only other thing I'd like to add, if I may, is that what you're talking about, the maintenance over, over the three years, because of that and, and it's actually, it was, it was on our, on our, on our bid when we bid it, we told, told them it wasn't something we came up with afterward. It's written right down in here. Is that basically what that means by having the maintenance, by having the warranty, it means that you don't have no, you guys don't have no cost over the next three years period?
It's all preventive maintenance.
Well, let me back that up. You would have your normal, obviously you'd have your fuel and you'd have your consumables, your tires, things like that. Those aren't things that are covered in warranty, so I'm going to, I got to back that up a little bit, but that was a little bit of the wrong statement, I apologize for that. The normal consumables, normal usables, wipers, things like that, those are things that, that use, they're not covered in anybody's warranty anywhere and they're not covered. But from a maintenance standpoint, when we service one of those loaders, typically on the, on the 500 hours, like an eight-hour job, which is $20,000, it was like right at $1,000, $3,000, just by itself. And there's going to be a number of those over the next three years, depending on how you guys use the, use the company. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that the Dusan 203 didn't meet specifications because it did. In most of the specifications, however, it pretty much, well, all the specifications that I've looked at, they are, we answer to your questions, the case is higher in all of those categories and they're about 2,000 pounds heavier. So when you're classing, and that's one of the things, when you took the case, our, our, our next down case that come up and met the specifications, that was almost met the specifications, not quite. The case on the other end is on the other side of it, the next one up. So the Dusan would be in the middle of it.
That bid two, how much horsepower with that are you?
168. Torque on the 621 is like 4, was it 480? And that's somewhere, I, I might have to have my bid in front of me to check that, but you don't have the whole thing you said.
Yeah, Pat McCullough did the, basically I'm going on Pat McCullough's review of the specs and, and his recommendation.
I would apologize, I don't have that direct number.
I'm just saying for you, if that's a, for $1,900, if that's a weight, a better tractor. But I don't know if we're going to be able to determine that tonight, perhaps. Sir, could you?
What you do...
Could you, would you honor this, your bid, your, your bid till our next council meeting, which is May 4th?
Uh, I believe, yes, I believe I could get that.
The reason I ask that is perhaps we can, we can do the value research and reach out to Omaha Tractor too and see if they'll still honor that bid at that point, do the value research and come back with a staff recommendation on which one is the better value. Perhaps, perhaps we can do that if the council would like us to do, do that.
We don't know if Bobcat has that one.
Right, we'd have to find that out and if they don't, if they don't honor that...
We just have to find the value of the maintenance for three years.
No, we won't, we can't change anything then, that's awkward.
Right.
But we could do the, we could do the value research and see if there's a more value in one bid over the other, a deeper value than that we are not speaking of tonight.
So that would call for a motion to table until next meeting? I'll move to table.
All right, we have a motion with a second to table and to come back in two weeks with some effort put in by staff to get some clarification. All right.
Yep.
All right, let's vote on that.
All council members voting in affirmative, motion to table carries.
All right, I see nothing further on the agenda, so thanks everybody. We are adjourned.